Good morning. I would like to welcome you to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM, Monday, August 16, 2010. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
So move, Madam Chair.
We have a motion by Mr. Stamey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roark. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. The first item on the agenda this morning is a presentation by Linda Baptiste, Partnership Specialist with the U.S. Census Bureau. All right. She is here. All right. Well, we will bypass that item and come back once she comes into the room. We'll move on to the next item, and that is a public information regarding the Atlanta Gaslight Pipeline. Our presenter is a representative from Atlanta Gaslight. Good morning. Yes, if you'd just step to the podium and please state your name.
I'm Jody Hewitt with Atlanta Gaslight. I'm the manager of community relations.
Good morning.
Good morning. We met last week with Mr. Sanders and a few of the other folks in Henry County, and we wanted to give you a little information about a project we are going to be working on called Georgia Stride. Our overall project... Jeff, you might have to take that up so they can see it. I'll take that one first.
Can you sit in front of the podium there facing us?
Yeah. So our Georgia Stride program was a program that was approved by the Georgia Public Service Commission last fall, and we are in the phases of a three-year project that's going to, as you can see on the map with all the projects, going to improve our pipeline all across Metro Atlanta. We did a lot of surveying with our engineering and our gas operations, and the way that Metro Atlanta has outsourced and gone, spread out all through Atlanta, we've determined that these points around our system are going to need to be upgraded, and we're going to need to increase the gas pressure all along our pipeline. So what that brings us to is one of the portions is going to be in East Henry County. It's called our central region pipeline. So we are going to be going through Spalding and Butts County and up to East Henry on a small portion, about three miles in Henry County, so that we can ensure that all of our customers in the Metro Atlanta area continue to receive gas on the coldest days of the year. So therefore, we're going to be doing a project here. We are right now in the phases of surveying and finishing our engineering and talking to local property owners. So our first phase is our permission to survey, which will have people out there asking property owners to survey their property, and we will be purchasing easements in order to be on people's property. And then our next phase will be construction, and that is scheduled to begin later next year, probably mid to late next year. So I also have brochures on our entire project and some smaller maps if anyone's interested, and we'd be happy to take questions. I've got Jeff Harville with me. He is our construction coordinator, and he'll be on-site the entire time of the project when construction begins.
Does any board member have a question? Mr. Bowman?
Yes, I actually have seven questions. One, and it's a different utility, and I won't mention their name, but they're going around at this time doing some cabling. And I've been getting calls recently about how they're not taking care of the areas that they're cabling. There's sod in the area when they get done, there's seed and straw. It's not been raked out, it's humped. I wouldn't look at some of it, it's a mess. What insurances do we have that Georgia Power's going to fix it like they found it? And do we have oversight? And will we have this board, will this board have any contact person that we can call when our constituents call us with a problem instead of getting an automated call where we get sent to somewhere in India, and we don't even know who we're talking to, and they don't know what we're talking about? So that, I'm sorry, that's a litany, basically, of questions. But one, who's going to be the oversight? Two, will this board have a number of a person that will be speaking on the other end of the line to be sure that that don't happen? And what are you going to do as Georgia Power to make sure that that don't happen?
Well, we're Atlanta Gaslight.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I've had the same situation with some stuff with Georgia Power. So anyway, go ahead.
But first of all, I will give Mr. Sanders, actually, and Mr. Holder, they all have my card, and I'll give all of you my personal card, so you'll have my cellphone as a direct line. Mr. Harville, Jeff Harville, will give you his information, because actually, he will be the person on-site. And as soon as I find out about a problem, if it does come to me, I immediately call Jeff. So, and he's the person on the ground, and he will get out there. Our guarantee is that we are going to put things back to as they were before, if not better. We do make that guarantee when we work on projects, and Jeff can attest to that. You can come up and speak if you'd like to speak to that.
Yeah, we also have a relationship with Henry County. We deal through Harry Busby and the permitting utility division, and they can get in touch with us by email, or he has my direct cellphone number also. So we will certainly leave you that information for any complaints.
Right. Thank you.
And I'll leave all this information. I'm not sure what the best place is, is it just to leave it here for y'all to do it? Okay. I also have some frequently asked questions. I have the map. I have brochures about the Atlanta Gaslight Georgia Stride project. And on the FAQs, we also have a dedicated phone number to the project and a dedicated email address that is also answered. It's answered within one hour, and the phone hotline is from eight to eight, seven days a week. So we will answer, and those are numbers for the actual residents, but y'all can have our business cards, and you have direct access to us.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Will there be a website set up where citizens can get more information?
There is, and it is the stride website, and it's on the back of this brochure, and it's already set up.
Is it Georgia Power or is it a Gaslight website?
It's not Georgia Power. They're our friendly competitor.
Mr. Holder?
In our previous meeting, you also indicated that this gas line would run parallel to the existing Georgia Transmission easement. Is that correct?
That is correct. It's easy to point out.
And one other thing, did you confirm that that is Georgia Transmission and not Georgia Power?
Yes. That is Georgia Transmission Company.
Right. Okay. It's GTC. It's not Georgia Power. I believe in the meeting, you also indicated that any road crossing would be bored rather than cut, too. Is that correct?
Jeff, I'm going to let, he's our construction guy. He's more of an expert on that.
That's again based on the permitting specifications by the county. If that's what y'all require, when we do the permit, we will bore the road.
Okay. And is there any part of this that will be in Henry County that, of this line, that will not run parallel to the GTC easement?
The way it's designed now, we have an existing pipeline that runs out eighty-one east and west. We will tie to that existing line and go parallel to the Georgia Power for approximately three miles, Georgia Transmission Line.
Okay. But it will be parallel to it?
Yes.
It's not?
That's...
And I think one thing that's interesting and that you might pass along in case there's someone watching that, I don't believe there's any subdivision or any great heavily populated area, because when the GTC line was put in, it was designed basically to run along property lines, so it would be at the rear of certain property lines or where it wouldn't impact any property owner any more than it was necessary. So I think that the people in that area who will be impacted by this certainly need to know that it's not where you're going outside of where there's already a utility easement, and that you're trying to impact or take more of their usable land. I think that's important. And I know you people that will be knocking on doors will explain that, but I think it's important that they know that going in, so that, you know, people don't get in the attack mode before it's necessary.
And that's true. We really did try and focus on the least intrusive way to put this pipeline in. So we did look at the power lines and the power line right-of-way so that we can be very, you know, respectful of people's property, that we can stay, you know, we don't want to take out any more property than we have to if we go along an existing power easement. The good thing about the gas company, as I know it, it looks, you know, it's very intrusive when we're actually doing the work and burying the pipe, but when we're gone, you don't know we're there, unlike you still have transmission lines that go overhead. So that fact that once we're in there, we're in there, and you're not going to know we're there, because we are going to put it back as well as we found it, minus if we do take trees down, we don't put the trees back over our pipeline, because those would damage the pipeline, but we will make the area and landscape the area back, so.
One other question, and I think it needs to be part of the record. That is a fifty-foot easement. Is that correct, is what you're asking for?
Do you know if that's about the fifty foot? I believe that's what we're...
What we want?
Yes. What are we trying to get?
Probably thirty. We'll use fifty?
Thirty to fifty.
Fifty is temporary works, maybe twenty temporary workspace, and then thirty foot.
Okay. Permanent easement would be thirty, temporary would be fifty. Okay. I think that's, again, is important, so that people know what you're talking about impacting of their property.
And we do try and use as much temporary workspace on the power line side versus the homeowner's side, is what we typically go for.
Are there any additional questions or comments? If not, we thank you so much for your presentation this morning. Michael, I'm going to ask you if Ms. Baptiste is here from the Census?
No, ma'am. As of yet. We have the award, but we don't have the presenter, so...
Okay.
Unless she's on her way, they were notified, so they know the date and time, so hopefully they'll get here in the next few minutes.
All right. Moving on, under public safety, we're going to have a rabies report for Henry County. Our presenter is Mr. Vince Fair of the Animal Control Department. As many of you know, for the last several months, we've had some incidences with some citizens who have been bitten, and this is something that is of concern, I'm sure, to all the residents of the county, and so Mr. Fair is going to give us a report on that this morning. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. As of today, for this year, along, we've tested eighteen animals, five which were positive. Three of those were domesticated animals, four human attacks, and three in Locust Grove, two in Hampton. We've had five quarantine, we've quarantined five different sites, one-mile radiuses, basically, for a fifteen-day period where we had reported, where we had a positive known case. Out of those five positives, three of them, of course, were domesticated versus wildlife. Four of them were human attacks. I know the numbers don't add up there, because one of those positives was a fox that had attacked two different people at the same time. But as well, we were higher than this last year. I hope our number does stay down. We, our record last year was, we had a positive thirteen animals. This year, I want to try to keep it below that if possible. I did predict about fourteen this year, and I hope my prediction is wrong. Any questions?
Does any board member have a question? Mr. Holder?
First of all, Vince, I want to thank you for being responsive and letting us know when there were attacks in the various areas of Henry County, and as you indicated, it's not isolated to one part of the county. It's basically everywhere. The second thing is, you are, have been appointed to the State Rabies Control Board or something of that nature. Is that correct?
Georgia law requires that any off-counties appoint a, what's known as a rabies control officer, and the Henry County Board of Health has asked me to assume that position, and I did with great gratitude.
Do you know of any proposals that are coming from the state as far as prevention? Are you safeguarding?
I've been dealing with our local, well, I call it our local, our region down in Fort, I think it's Fort Valley, I believe, somewhere, where they have the, where the main office is for the Georgia Department of Natural Resources Wildlife Division down there. I've been dealing with them. The guy that is in charge of this area is a local resident of Henry County and lives in the Locust Grove area. I've been conversing with him on as far as what we've seen in the areas that we've, our problem areas. And people may call in if they have a nuisance fox or what have you. They may call this a number that we can't give them if they call us, or it's located on the Georgia Department of Natural Resources website. And they will issue permits to individual citizens to render nuisance problems with wildlife. But as far as our areas and our problems here, we talked about a rabies vaccine, which is an oral version of it, which is known as ketchup packs, and they indicated to me that it really, really wouldn't be feasible in an area like, such as we have here, because our rural areas have pretty much shrunk, and we'd have more problems with them landing on people's houses and cars and driveways and so forth, and it wouldn't really be beneficial to solve the problem, because these animals are scattered, like you said, all about.
Any other questions or comments from board members on this item? All right, well, Vince, before you sit down, we sort of used that as a way of getting you over here, because we wanted to do a presentation to you this morning, and I've got something that I want to read first, and then I'm going to read the presentation to you. Vince Fair has been a Henry County resident for forty-one years. He is well-known and well-respected in the county and is active both politically and civilly. Vince carries on the family tradition of Henry County employees. His father, Thomas Fair, was Henry County's first paid fire chief, appointed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners in 1974. A former firefighter and first responder for the city of McDonough, Vince has been an employee of Henry County since 1987. He transferred from the Department of Transportation to the Henry County Animal Care and Control Department in 1991. Vince served as an animal control field officer for seventeen years. In April 2008, he was promoted to his current position as department coordinator and rabies control officer. Vince is well-versed in all aspects of animal control, both at the county and state level. His duties include immediate supervision of the animal control field officers. He handles all bite cases that occur in the county, both from domestic animals and wildlife. Since 2008, Vince has assumed the additional responsibility of overseeing all confirmed cases of rabies in the county. He personally manages all confirmed cases of the rabies virus, coordinating required quarantines, testing, and community alerts. He has an excellent working relationship with the Georgia Department of Human Resources Public Health Laboratory in Atlanta, the Georgia Department of Natural Resources, game management division, as well as Ms. Glenda Scott, Henry County's environmental health manager. He has an extensive, he has an extensive knowledge of the Georgia Rabies Control Manual, as well as all state and county rules and regulations in regards to rabies control. Georgia state law requires all county board of health to appoint a rabies control officer whose official responsibilities in that capacity are to enforce Georgia state law in regards to rabies and other activities of dogs within Henry County. The Henry County Board of Health officially appointed Vince as Henry County's rabies control officer in July 2010. Vince and his wife, Rhonda, reside in the city of McDonough. They have two children and one grandchild. In his off-time, Vince serves on the board of directors of the McDonough Youth Association and volunteers as the assistant director of the McDonough Youth Association softball program. And we have a certificate of appreciation that we want to give to you today in recognition of your numerous contributions to the Animal Care and Control Department and your commitment and expertise in educating the public about rabies and animal safety in order to preserve and protect public health, and in appreciation of your service and dedication to this community for twenty-three years, including your recent appointment to the Henry County Board of Health as its official rabies control officer. We appreciate you, and we're also very, very proud of your accomplishments and because you're part of the Henry County government family.
Thank you.
We'd like to meet you over here for a photograph. Moving on, under social services, the first item is a resolution requesting authorization to accept the FY 2011 Department of Human Services Coordination, Coordinated Transportation Grant. Our presenter is Mr. David Williamson, Transit Director, Exhibit Number One. Good morning.
Good morning. We do request approval of the 2011 contract for the coordinated transportation services. This contract is a fee-for-service based, so there is no matching funds required. The reimbursement is $465,387.23. Just as a matter of information, we were able to negotiate a slight increase in our reimbursement rate for this year, and we do recommend approval.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have a resolution before you approving the coordinated transportation grant, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
And you also have the next item, which is a resolution requesting authorization to apply for the Georgia Department of Transportation grant for public transportation assistance, and that's going to be Exhibit Number Two.
Yes, ma'am. This is a capital assistance portion of our GDOT grant, and it is to replace two 2,006 mile, sixteen-passenger buses with over 100,000 miles of them. The total cost of the buses is 105,000. The county match is $10,500, and we recommend approval, please.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Mr. Holder?
Williamson, at the end of the life of these vehicles that the state has spent ninety percent on, and we spend ten, how are they disposed of, and who gets the money when they're disposed of?
Who gets the money?
Yeah.
We return them straight to GDOT, and they go to Department of Administrative Services, and they're surplus.
Okay.
Any additional questions? If not, you have a resolution before you agreeing to apply for the GDOT FY 2011 5311 Rural Transit Operating Assistance and Capital Improvement Assistance, and I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Mr. Holder?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Moving on, under administration, resolution awarding a bid for the purchase and installation of mobile data routers for the police department. Our presenter is Clark Rayner, Technology Services Director, Exhibit Number Four. Good morning.
Good morning. Yes, this is a, this is a portion of some of the equipment that's going to be used for our e-citation program, which is rolling out as an overall part of our CEGIS project. Funding for this item is actually coming from 2008 funds achieved during the Omnibus Appropriations Act of 2008 that was geared specifically for, it was, I believe Chairman Harper actually went to Washington and lobbied for these funds, and it's, we're down to the, to the end of the wire now. We're about to roll this out, and we actually expect to have the entire e-citation program rolled out and in production by November of this year. What this device specifically does is it maintains persistent connection to our network via the internet and via a secured connection. It also will allow for ad hoc networks to be created as two police cars move within proximity of each other, which keeps that traffic off of the internet if they need to share files and videos, et cetera. It also has a component which includes some GPS and tracking abilities as well, so that all of that information is gathered, so that the officer themselves don't actually have to record that information. It's, it really kind of creates a situation where a lot of the redundancy of effort and the handwriting of information really just becomes a function of the programs and the systems within the car itself. Be happy to take any questions. This was put out for bid. We did only achieve one bidder on this particular item, which is actually produced over in Covington. You have to take any questions.
How many, how many vendors was this sent out?
We're opening sixty, sixty units to begin with, which primarily targeting those that are involved with traffic citations, those uniform patrol divisions, those folks that really produce the most citations. Right now, the numbers that the police department are showing are around 20,000 citations per year. We believe that with this initial part of the program is that we're going to be able to income about eighty, a little more than eighty percent of all of those tickets through the e-citation program.
How many invitations to bid were sent out?
We sent out a total of nine here, too, plus it was, you know, posted on the website through the ACCG, the GLGA websites. It went through the normal process, but it went out to everyone. I can tell you this, that there are a couple of the major vendors that did not choose to bid on this. They do produce a similar product, but it's really geared toward the military. And I can tell you that the price point for those items is somewhere around eight to $10,000 per unit, which just, it's not doable for our purposes, not with the amount of funding that we have. These units are sub $2,000 apiece. And so this is a much more economical, even though it is a hardened unit, it really, it fits this purpose much better than some of those military spec items, items do, especially for the price point.
Any other questions? Mr. Stamey?
Clark, you said there was three other bidders that bid on this? You said there was three bids?
No, sir, there was one.
There was only one?
Only a single bidder.
You bid out nine, and only one response, correct?
Correct. It was sent to the nine area national vendors, and additionally, it was posted on the websites and all the other normal areas, and, you know, basically anyone that it was, had registered as a potential, you know, seller of this type of equipment throughout the county's purchasing process, but only, only one responded.
Mr. Bowman?
Clark, is there, to your knowledge, is there anything in the, in the proposal that would preclude any of the bidders from being able to bid? Was there, was there any, it just seems strange that only one of nine would actually even, did anybody contact us that you know of and state, well, we, you know, this is, this is, you know, a sole source that we have to buy something from?
No, we did get a sole-source letter from the manufacturer that said that they only did business through CDWG, which was the bidder that, that actually did bid on this that we're recommending an award to. However, there are, there are a number of other little data routers and that sort of thing, none of which can do everything that this particular product can do anywhere close to the same price point. Again, there's a couple of national vendors that you would be familiar with, the Cisco and Motorola, those types of vendors out there, that do produce a similar product, but they're, they're really geared for military specs. I mean, they're what are used in the tanks and the...
the handwriting of information really just becomes a function of the programs and the systems within the car itself. Be happy to take any questions. This was put out for bid. We did only issue one bidder on this particular item, which is actually produced over in Covington. You have to take any questions.
How many, how many vendors was this sent out?
We're asking 60, 60 units to begin with, which primarily targeting those that are involved with traffic citations, those uniform patrol divisions, those folks that really produce the most citations. Right now, the numbers that the police department are showing are around 20,000 citations per year, and we believe that with this initial part of the program is that we're going to be able to encompass about 80, a little more than 80% of all of those tickets through the citation program.
How many invitation to bid were sent out?
We sent out a total of nine here to, plus it was being posted on the website through the ACCG, the GLGA websites. It went through the normal process, but it went out to everyone. I can tell you this, that there are a couple of the major vendors that did not choose to bid on this. They do produce a similar product, but it's really geared toward the military. And I can tell you that the price point for those items is somewhere around $8,000 to $10,000 per unit, which is just, it's not doable for, for our purposes, not with the amount of funding that we have. These units are sub $2,000 apiece, and so this is a much more economical, even though it is a hardened unit, it really, it fits this purpose much better than some of those military spec items, items do, especially for the price point.
Any other questions? Mr. Stamey?
Clark, you said there was three other bidders that bid on this? You said there was three bids?
No, sir, there was one.
There was only one?
Only a single bidder.
You bid out nine, and only one response, correct?
Correct. It was sent to the nine area national vendors, and additionally, it was posted on the websites and all the other normal areas, and, you know, basically anyone that it was, had registered as a potential, you know, seller of this type of equipment throughout the county's purchasing process, but only, only one responded.
Mr. Bazler?
Clark, is there, to your knowledge, is there anything in the, in the proposal that would preclude any of the bidders from being able to bid? Was there, was there any, it just seems strange that only one of nine would actually even, did anybody contact us that you know of and state, well, we, you know, this is, this is, you know, a sole source that we have to buy something from?
No, we, we did get a sole source letter from the manufacturer that said that they only did business through CDWG, which was the bidder that, that actually did bid on this, that we're recommending award to. However, there are, there are a number of other little data routers and that sort of thing, none of which can do everything that this particular product can do anywhere close to the same price point. Again, there's a couple of national vendors that you would be familiar with, a Cisco, a Motorola, those types of vendors out there, that do produce a similar product, but they're, they're really geared for military specs. I mean, they're, they're what are used in the tanks and the Humvees and the Bradleys, that sort of thing on a military scene. And again, the price point, we've priced them in the past, and they just don't come anywhere close.
So there was a sole source issue with certain parts of the equipment?
Yes, sir.
And, and that, would that vendor have priced the same thing to anybody else that would have asked?
I'm, I'm, I'm.
I'm, I'm, I'm.
A little unclear.
I'm a little confused.
Sure.
Is the sole source the person that bid it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that answers that question, never mind, because he would not have gave prices to his competitors. It just seems strange because there's, you know, there's, there's a lot of this type of equipment in other counties. I mean, it seems strange that we wouldn't have anybody else price it, but.
And we, we did, you know, the specifications were, were written in as generic way as we possibly could. We didn't say the specific product. You know, we really said a mobile data router with the specifics in terms of the qual, of the capabilities that we're looking for, that persistence, being able to, to, you know, put that umbrella of, of a network so that when someone, an officer's working an accident scene, for instance, they can get this out and use it, you know, outside of the vehicle and still maintain a connection without, without having to unplug and plug stuff back in.
Understood. That's all I have, ma'am.
Mr. Holder?
Clark, I see that it says we have 75 vehicles equipped with suitable laptops. How many is that? All of the units that we have in, in traffic control, or how many are not equipped?
We're, we're targeting 60 units, actually, for this particular e-citation project, which requires that data connectivity to remain persistent. That will encompass about 80% of all of the citations that are written, and with the initial phase of the project based on the budget, we may come back if there's any money left over and try to.
But this is for 60 units?
This is for 60 units, yes.
60 units, and we, we currently have 75 that have the laptops. Do any of them?
Right, actually, I think that number's probably gone up from there, too. I think we've got about 100 right now that are, that are outfitted with laptops.
Okay.
But a number of those are assigned to the detectives, people in CID, other units.
But this is to service 60?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Which are concentrated in the traffic inforcent areas.
Understood. Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Just for Claire, can I be clear on it? The money's coming from what now?
It's coming from a grant that we received as a part of the Omnibus Appropriations Act of 2008. It's a non-matching grant. It's basically that we need to draw those funds down, and we have, Mike, do you know? Where'd it go? I think until the end of September to actually finish drawing those funds down so that we get that reporting, because they are federal funds, there's a, there's a lot of reporting requirements involved, that we've got to get that back to, to the COPS administration, the COPS program that's actually doing the administration of this from the feds, but we've got to get all that reported back or else we lose the money.
That original grant amount for, under that SEEGIS grant, was, was that close to about $475,000?
$465,000.
$465,000. Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution awarding the bid to CDWG Government Incorporated in the amount of $129,960.60, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
You have a motion by Mr. Holder, is there a second? We have a motion by Mr. Holder, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roark, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Moving on to the next item, it's a resolution awarding a bid for janitorial supplies for various departments. Our presenter is Mike Bush, Finance Director, and that's Exhibit Number Five.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, board. We sent out 22 bids to local and national vendors. Additionally, the bid was posted on the county website and the ACCG GLGA website, and we got 12 responses back, so a little better than the last resolution. Basically, funding for this, funding for this resolution is within each department's budget. Last year, we spent approximately $130,000 on janitorial supplies. Large portion of this is the fire department with cleanups and things like that that they have to have. This is for a three-year contract with two one-year extensions. The last time we bid this thing out was May of 2007 for a one-year contract with two one-year extensions. Some of the prices that we have for this contract are actually less than they were last time, some of them are a little higher. The majority of them are different because you have newer solutions and whatever that comes out, more green-type solutions, so some of these aren't, weren't even bid the first time, but this is what the police department, I mean, the fire department and other departments kind of send in a list of what items they used. We had 12 vendors send in a price, and we are wishing to award the bid to the low bidder, Peoples Janitoria.
Are there any questions or comments from board members on this item? Not yet. Mr. Stamey?
Michael, when you look at it, especially products out of Griffin, has some products that are cheaper than the other guy. The majority is Peoples. Is any way this could be split and do a co, co-vendor on it? Because you don't, I mean, you could actually save money on, if you bought some of the other stuff, because the amount of product that we're going to be buying is a pretty good bit of savings there.
Okay.
Just, just a thought.
I assume we could do that. This was a unit price bid, and the way we did it the last time is, and you were right, there are some items that are cheaper, and even if you flip it over further, you know, there are some items that one of these bidder, vendors only bid on two items of the 25, so it was, we just looked at a more encompassing-type package, but we definitely could go back and look at a, you know, awarding to maybe two of, two of these or three of these different pieces, but we just have to make sure that when our departments get ready to bid, they know which vendor to use, and it, it becomes a little difficult, but we could do that if that's what you would like for us to do.
Any other board member with a question or comment? All right, if, if not, we can entertain a motion to approve the resolution that you have before you awarding it to Peoples Janitoria, or we can entertain a motion to table and allow staff to go back and look at a split bid.
I'm sure I'll move to approve the resolution before us.
We have a motion by Mr. Holder to approve the resolution awarding the bid to Peoples Janitoria as a unit price contract with no fixed quantities, and I'll, is there anyone who would like to second that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roark, all in favor? All opposed. Motion carries four one, with Roark, Bazler, Bowman, and Holder in favor, and Stamey in opposition.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I need approval of the May 17th and 18th meetings. If there are any corrections or additions that need to be made before we ask for, before I ask for a motion on that. All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Holder, is there a second? Second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. At this time, we're moving on to the portion of our meetings for public comment. Citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. We did have one citizen who signed up for public comment this morning. Public comment is limited to five minutes. Mr. Joseph Pettit of 46 Alexander Road in McDonough has signed up. In his topics that he wishes to address the board on are unenforceable tax law, unprofessional conduct by county personnel, and a $408 tax refund. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for providing an opportunity for me to speak with you. My name is Joseph Petit. I am an honorably discharged disabled veteran. I have a business license for Henry County. I am requesting a $408 refund for occupational taxes collected from me through false information by Henry County. Henry County Ordinance 3-3-28 was repealed before I ever applied for a business license. At the end of March this year, I requested a refund from the Tax Commissioner. He has referred the matter to the, to the county attorney. Much later, the Tax Commissioner seemed to be at the end of his patience concerning the county attorney. Apparently, she was uncooperative with him, so he referred me directly to her. I made repeated attempts to contact her. She seems to be the most evasive person I have spoken with in recent years. She claimed she needed two additional weeks the first time we spoke. Later, she claimed she needed an additional four to six weeks to resolve the matter. Presently, she refuses to speak with me or apparently anyone else on this matter. The county manager has not been able to get the matter resolved for me. I have been waiting more than four and a half months to get this matter resolved. I do not appreciate the unprofessional treatment I have endured. I ask the board to have this resolved to my satisfaction and issue a refund check to me in the amount of $408. Respectfully, for the reasons I have given, I also ask for a timeline of when I can expect a resolution on this. I am presently available to answer questions on this matter. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Mr. Petit, we thank you for coming in and bringing this to our attention. Of course, our county attorney is not here this morning. She's in court, and before I have, I, I don't think the board can answer any of these questions until we've had an opportunity to talk with her about that, but that's something that we will do this week.
I do appreciate that. Should I contact the board or someone in particular at a later date, or should I expect someone to contact me?
You, you can expect someone to contact you.
May I ask about what time?
This week. You will have someone contact you this week concerning this issue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in and sharing this with us. Thank you. Mr. County Manager, any comments for public session?
No, I do not.
Mr. Stamey?
Madam Chair, do we need to go back up and table the request on this Census Bureau? Do we need to table that request until tomorrow?
Yeah, Chairman, I apologize. We, we were notified by the Census Bureau, and they asked if they can come in and do the presentation. We gave them the date, and they actually confirmed the date of today, this morning, so I'm not quite sure what happened. We've made some calls, haven't had a response. We have the presentation and the letter from them. If it's the board's desire, I can read that, or if you want to table it to notes, how we can get them here.
What is the wishes of the board on that?
We would like them to come and present that. Seems to be the consensus. Okay, I'll contact them and find out when that can happen.
You want him to present it, or you want them to present it?
No, we want the Census Bureau to, to present it, so I'll entertain a motion to table this item until a future meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Harris, was that not the wishes of the Census Bureau, that they make the presentation?
Yes, sir, was. They notify, ask, ask if they can come in and make the presentation. They've actually sent us the, the award materials, and again, we've made calls, we don't know. They confirmed that they would be here, so again, I apologize for their not being here.
The upcoming meetings will be tomorrow, August 17th, at 6:30 PM. We have a regular board meeting. Friday, September 3rd is a county furlough day. All county offices will be closed. Monday, September the 6th, no meeting, that's the Labor Day holiday. All county offices will be closed. Tuesday, September 7th at 9:00 AM, we have a regular board meeting. Due to the fact that county attorney is not here this morning, we are not going to have an executive session, so with that in mind, if there's no further business to come before this board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Roark, is there a second?
Hold, excuse me, hold on a minute. The county manager's trying to get.
I understand, Ms. Wiley is in court this morning, but we do need to have an executive session to discuss potential property acquisition.
Are we able to do that without the presence of the county attorney?
I think you can. I think the clerk is the only one that's required.
No, the clerk is not required. The clerk is not required.
Do we know what time she'll be back?
I, I cannot tell you that. I know that she's in Judge Arrows courtroom on a tax appeal matter.
Is there any way we can contact her via her BlackBerry and see if she can give us a timeframe for being back? We could take a short recess if she's able to be here for an executive session. I don't think anybody on the board feels comfortable having an executive session without the attorney, county attorney, present. Would that be the consensus of the board?
Could the, this is just a question, I don't know the answer to, so could the clerk sit in and take notes, and then the clerk's very aware of what we can talk about in executive session and what we can't? Is that an issue? Is that an issue? That's just a question.
I know under law the clerk is not required to be in executive session, but I would assume that an attorney would be.
Well, I was saying in lieu of an attorney, but I, I know what you're saying. I would divert to our county historian, Mr.
Mr. Holder?
Commissioner Hope, if I may. I would ask if we take a short recess and contact the attorney to see, hey, the assistant attorney just walking in.
Can we take a 20-minute recess?
According to the statement, potential, the, where is the property acquisition?
Property acquisition.
It doesn't say, but it does say consultation with the county attorney. They're gonna, they probably will break at lunch for lunch, as someone from the county attorney staff just, just mentioned. What time? We don't have a time yet.
We have a very, very brief meeting tomorrow evening. We could have an executive session tomorrow evening, and it wouldn't.
These three hours is gonna be tomorrow evening.
Following the commissioning or during the commissioning?
Tomorrow morning. I know we've got.
Well, no, but our meeting starts at 6:30. We could convene into executive session during our regular commission meeting time.
We don't, Madam Chair, if we don't recess, we drive out an email or whatever, see what we do.
She said it'd be lunchtime before they break.
She doesn't have access to her email.
Then that's, that's fine.
All right, in order to avoid any type of issues that may crop up as a result of not knowing whether or not we can hold an, an executive session without the presence of the county attorney on land acquisition items, I, I think it would be the safest thing to, to have executive session tomorrow evening during the regular scheduled commission meeting.
No comment.
Mr. Stamey?
Mitch, is there anything pressing for, for today?
Well, there, there is, that one issue, but if we can, if we can address that tomorrow evening, we probably will be okay there.
Okay.
All right, if there's no further business to come before this board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
We need a second to his motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Roark, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. We stand adjourned.